Item two. This is regarding the handbook revision. I FYI for the tables application, I sent it to our trusted DA for review. Just recent.
It was last year.
And I did not expect her to bring it back and say, here's what she needed. But she's left it over. There's two areas. You've glanced at it. There's two areas that suggest that we had remote work, which the county experienced. Twenty twenty is when we did the COVID leave. So we needed remote work section and then a social media section. So those are two areas that we should add. Also, and here's a purple, if there were like a purple was here earlier, I believe you were of it. The Association of County Commissioners has a handbook that's been through the ringers back and forth. I think without remote work.
Right, they don't have those in their policies. I was just going off of best practices like for in general. That that was approved, it's in twenty twenty three as a form used by the Association of County Commissioners as a template for counties if they wanted to adopt perfect HR policy. And I have reviewed it and I like the language, but I'm everything, I'm going through, I'm checking your lists. I'm checking off, you know, and if there was suggestions, I'm trying to make them. I'm all the way done with this, but I wanted Jill to be aware of that because I think the language in that might be brie- briefer than shorter than this.
And we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
And you don't have to reinvent the wheel and you're consistent with what other counties are already doing. And so it's kind of low lying fruit, especially if you need a deadline to meet with for the auditor. And the language is where? It's if you go online, you can actually pull it up. If you go to the Association of County Commissioners and you look in their forums, it has an HR policy form. And that's where I went and got it because I was thinking, you know, I'm always about working smarter, not harder. If it's already been vetted, I can vet it again and we can add to that or tweak to that. Maybe some combination of those, but I do, I did recognize some of the language in there for some of our policies. It was like this block and their language is like.
Perfect.
So I was thinking, well, you know, if you all were looking for shorter, I was trying to get you an example of something that was compliant being used by other counties and it's shorter.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How many, how many pages is that whole?
This is which?
Well, it's fifty two, but it's got some attestations and it's even got a resolution. I mean, it's like an entire pack. It's literally like, here's your policy, here's your s testation, like the signature pages for the employee when they receive it. And here's the resolution for the board to adopt.
So it's like turnkey.
It is a turnkey packet for adopting a, a HR policy that Association of County Commissioners, which I believe we are, participants in. I mean, that's a service that they were.
We could pretty much adopt that.
Probably.
But we still would, you would still recommend the addition of social media.
I would and remote work, just because like I said, I know the pandemic is over, but you know, why wait? I mean, we, we know, why not have one in the event you ever need it in.
Yeah. Well, that's keeping up with the times.
And it's come up a couple of different times and we might still have some maybe IT or people that do use more remote work. So it's just an opportunity to get that covered. And then social media is a big thing when people post on their social media accounts. It's a big, it's a big deal in HR right now. That, that policy is older and didn't really have, but it's, it's one of the hot topics in HR right now is employees and their social media posts, what they're putting out there and how they're representing their employees in social media.
Sure. So you say you're going, they're in the process of going through this as we speak.
Uh, no, that is what is on their website now.
No, no, as far as like going through and making revisions or notes or anything.
I'm in the process of doing that. So like I said, as far as today's session goes, you know, I can go through and, you know, make notes. And if I think their, their language is maybe better or shorter, I could suggest something like that. Because like I said, that to me, some of the language in there is much more condensed. And just to kind of give you an idea, it's a good idea of one of the, you know, you know, what I told you about examples last time, you know, like examples and defining sexual harassment. Sexual harassment and, and harassment is a legal term, right? We can't confuse harassment with bullying in the workplace, which is not protected by. Oh, you see what I'm saying? Like, so I have some issues with some of the language in here because I think we're, we are covering more than what we're required, but I want you to be aware of it. You can do that. You can offer more protection, you can't offer less. But I'm always like, you know, whenever somebody says, this is what harassment means. I don't ever want to, you know, the courts could come out tomorrow with a different definition of harassment. And you know, I don't ever want to have us be locked into a definition.
Well, you're the professional in the room.
Right, also, I'm just saying, so I am going through this. And like I said, I think that that would, and that's probably, like I said, they have lawyers, they have had multiple lawyers, probably and multiple DAs input on that particular document already. So I liked it when I read it, I, that I, my goal was is to go through yours, point out anything that our language that I feel like needs to be changed. But I'm basically, if it's, if it's good and it's legal, I'm regardless of verbiage or I'm putting okay. You know what I mean? Like I'm whatever you want, but I wanted to make you guys aware of that particular document. Because that may be the exact same HR policy that Canadian County, Cleveland County. And if you have employees that are coming from different counties to different counties, what a seamless transition.
Yeah, that continuity is great.
That continuity helps.
So could it be a situation where, you know, we would allow you the time to complete, to complete the handbook with revisions or notes or whatever, present that to each of us outside of our meeting? So we have time to read through it, get with the elected official, digest it and then meet to discuss finalizing any of those changes?
Right, what I could do, like I said, I've got the request for legal services from the chair. What I can do is issue a response to that. I can email it to you, you could disseminate it and give everybody time to digest it.
Yeah, that would be great.
Because like I said, this, I mean, what you all have submitted, I mean, I was looking through it, you know, I haven't gone, I haven't done the, there's a lot unpack here, but I'm going through it and I'm trying to be meticulous, but it's going to take me, you know.
Understandably.
You can give it a couple more days.
Yeah, sure. A few more days, a few more, a few more days. You know, today's the thirtieth, I got it on the twenty third. Yeah, I need a few more days. But, um, you know, I would say, you know, I know that this is a long drawn out process, but you know, you give me another two weeks and I can probably get something to you and then that, then you guys have another two week, maybe it can reconvene your monthly meet because I don't know if it's monthly meeting.
Well, we do special meetings.
Special meetings, but like give, I, I can probably give you something back within two weeks of today and then you're looking.
We appreciate your time on that.
And then, but like I said, I think this, this helps because you know, that's different than getting one question at a time. I can look at a policy and say, I can go yay or nay.
Perfect.
And compare it and give, you know, but I just wanted to put that in your hands. Because I'm, I was with, after our last meeting, I was, when you were talking about what you were wanting. And I was thinking, well, what, and you said something, one of you two said something about what's Tulsa County doing? And I was like, well, they have these questions, what are they doing? And then I went out and I found that immediately.
Yeah.
And I thought, well, here's what they're doing. Here's what they're doing.
Yeah, I, you know, without objection, I'm going to recommend that. That's what she missed.
With the addition of social media and remote work.
Right, and I can, and like I said, I can insert those, I can insert those parts. Like I said, anything I would and everything that when I do that, what I'll do is I'll convert that to a word document and anything I change or add will be in red.
Red line.
Yeah, it will be red lined or underlined.
I've been on this handbook meeting over the years for ten to fifteen years. I've just been so stupid right now, but thank you for it.
No, no, I mean.
Who knew?
But here's the thing, that's the whole thing is like, you know, when you're doing this, it is such a daunting task to do an, an, a, a HR policy. I mean, it does take a long time. And but, you know, my last meeting, we all said, what's Tulsa County doing? What did they, who were they adopting? I just went out and tried to find, find that and I thought, well, you know, you are a member, we are members of ACOG and I don't think, obviously, there's also that layer of protection. When you're, I mean, I hate to say that, it's great that you're VA system, but you have a layer of protection where you can point to a standardized policy that the Association of all seventy seven county commissioners that are members of have kind of put out on their website and said, hey, counties.
That's neat.
So Rick, was that a motion? Do we need a motion?
Uh, well, I, I said without exception, do we need a motion? If we need a motion, let's do a motion. Go ahead and make one.
I'll make a motion.
To?
To, um. Yes, including the two additions that we mentioned, social media and remote work, pending any changes that we will review.
By the, okay, any recommended changes?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Great stuff. When you think of the number of hours in this room. And this was right.
Sure, sure.
Okay, all right, thanks so much. Uh, I wish Brandon was here because it's twenty eight day cycle. They also critical for, we kind of estimated almost half of our, what he was in county. So.
Shall we defer this one?
Yeah. All right, I just.
I agree, Brandon's going to have a lot of good input.
Or DA.
Well, I'll make a motion to defer item number three. To our next meeting.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Motion. Thank you. Now, I, it was attached. There was an email, I have it in case you don't. I went and met with IT, we didn't call to. I also met with Augie. And I had a phone call to Trevor from the auditor office about what their beef was with the administrative leave. Augie showed them away through Executine.
To add subcodes.
To add subcodes. The problem is when it gets over and it's somehow pushed over to Tyler Muniz. Tyler Muniz, right now, only has run for Congress, which is paid around. I asked Augie if directed by the budget, we have to make sure that VA clears everything. Do we, is Tyler Muniz capable of adding subcodes? It's section eight oh seven. It just says admin, that's all it says. That's all the auditor says, well, that's all we can see. And Augie said, well, I can give it to you in execute. There's some dropdowns in execute if you want to review it. Question is, and if you've read their Trevor's email, they're wanting to be able to, because it was a, what is it, a non something finding, reportable finding. If they come back and review, uh, because that was what it reviewed, was that twenty two, twenty three? So their next review would be twenty three, twenty four, they're going to look at it again. But they have requested that we include some type of dropdown with options for military duty. You know, you know, under investigation, you know, but all these various possibilities that they can, when looking at it, it's not just arbitrary. Even though I'm pretty sure all of us in our offices could justify. We looked up of the fifty eight instances in our office, fifty three were COVID. The sheriff's office had some investigations going on and stuff with the loss of a deputy or two that happened. When they do investigations, there's things going on. We all have our reasons, our elected officials have a right to grant administrative leave at their discretion. What we're trying to develop, my understanding is some guidance for our elected officials. And then to the, at the auditor's request, prove what that admin was, so that taxpayers know how our money was spent and somebody's not in the office that didn't pay or perhaps not getting paid. So with that, if you have any comments on this letter, please, or email.
No, I mean, once again, this is a non, uh, one of those non findings, findings. I think that all you have to do is be able to match your points. I think if you can show your Venus that it's in a category, you will meet your audit recommendations. But aside from that, if it can't be done on your computer system, I'm just saying in the HR file, just an email, any type of documentation, I think satisfies that requirement. But when you have an auditor coming, they're just pulling what, that time sheet, right? And it's not right there.
Right. Well, and then if we have like documentation to explain each of those, then we'd have to go back and pull all of them.
Right.
You know, per case over that past year, and in this case was two, three years ago.
Right.
I mean, it would certainly be easier if there were a dropdown under administrative to even further categorize, to hopefully simplify that process.
Obviously, that can be done.
So it's just a matter of compiling the list that will, they will actually make available.
It's man.
Okay.
Yeah, Tyler's adaptable. Instead of Executine does it. When it pushes over to Tyler Muniz to get paid.
It drops off.
Goes away.
Now, I have some familiarity with the, um, Muniz reporting capabilities related to time. And there are custom, there is a custom report that I've been able to pull that will show the, um, any employee's time usage or time categorization. So I'm not as familiar with the backend. I do understand that their codes could be, I don't know if they would be subcodes or just a new code that would be handed by administratively.
Yeah, it'd be under the eight oh seven and then drop.
Yeah. And so, right, so the, I don't, I'm not as familiar with the reportable subcodes. I'm familiar only with the codes as they exist now, so that would not be difficult to determine. But from an HR perspective, it is very beneficial to be able to identify, it would just be a matter of training, how we run those reports on a regular basis to, I mean, even so you as leaders of your organizations could know from a intelligence perspective, what's happening in the workforce.
Right.
So it's really just, it's reportable and it will substantiate the need to pull those documentation from the file if needed.
Right, and like I said, that you don't, that way you only have to go to the file. If, you know, if, if like, for instance, if, and you mentioned also, you know, that you can also have administrative other category. But if there's some weird reason that one of your electeds wants to grant administrative leave, it's not one of the dropdown codes, you can have a code for other and then just highly document that in your HR file. But, you know, I'm, I think you're going to meet the requirements. I think that, you know, they just want more clarity, will you say administratively, which kind of ministry?
Yes, yes.
Like they just want, they just want clarification so that we don't have like the ghost employee had a situation happen. That's what I'm being the nerd looking for, so.
So would it be a situation in which maybe perhaps this body could come up with a list of options?
That's the idea.
Um, and once we're satisfied that it encompasses pretty much everything, then present it to budget board for approval? Okay.
And I would, um, they also want it in the handbook.
Sure.
Yeah, I would go with that.
I mean, that's fine. Like I said, it, we can just have a little list of these are administrative, these will be administratively COVID on the time sheets.
Even though that's more of a.
It's, like I said, it's, to me, it's not something that belongs in a handbook, but.
If it checks the box for them.
The box for them because like I said, they are here and they're just looking to match up their, this is what I'm supposed to look for. Anything that lets them quickly check that box is better for us.
Okay, so do we need to come up with a list now?
Yeah, uh, I don't know if we need to do that today, but we could.
We had a list, I'm sorry, maybe didn't, somebody came up with a list.
At the last meeting that we looked at. And could we take that list from the last meeting and go to our electeds and see if they have any changes or additions and then present those at our next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that your motion? It sounds.
That is, yes, I will make that motion.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor.
Aye. Where is that list now? I don't, is it attached, was it attached? I can't remember. I remember the list.
Was it included in the agenda item?
Was it as a thing I, was it in the thirty seven? I don't even remember. It was in the draft. Okay. It was in, it was in the draft because like I said, what makes sure, what's making your, your handbooks so long is we have all these examples and all these lists. I made it. Well, this one's, this one just, no.
This is the revised, is that the one that you're referring to, the one that you have been reviewing?
No, um, that, the one I've been reviewing, I just got to the end of it, that was, it was the last meeting.
It should, it should be this one.
You're just administrative.
Administrative leave is very short. It just says paid or unpaid administrative leave may be granted to situations not covered by other types of leave. Administrative leave is granted at discretion.
We will.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was a long one. So.
I think I went into check G P M, so give me some sample.
Yeah, I think that was in the sample outside of. I have too many pieces of paper here.
I think it might have been a.
It was a separate, it was a separate piece of paper, wasn't it? I, I think so, but we hadn't mentioned that, I think.
Okay, I've got it here. It was an attachment in last, in our last meeting, administrative. That, uh, there you go. That's it.
Now it's all going to be back to me. Yeah, that was, yeah. That's safe. And see, I think you could list the COVID leave and leave off the definition, but in your handbook, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's shorter. I mean, I, I don't, I think that do, I don't know that you need the definitions of volunteer, civic, like civic service or.
Right.
Yeah.
Arrangement, I don't know that you need definitions.
Just the thing that bolded.
Right, right.
Would it be appropriate to just have a sentence that say administratively?
Includes these categories and will be provided for as an option for selection on their time sheets. Something like that, yeah, I mean, I think that, like I said, I think a lot of those are some.
Explanatory.
Explanatory. Got to bring my sticky note. When I went back last time, our elected official, we were kind of chatting about some of that. And our office was pretty sure that COVID had been taken out of the list for administrative leave. And somebody looked up and found the date of the meeting where they said, we are not going to do COVID as administrative leave. And I have it written down on the sticky note and I left it, it's still on my desk. Um, but, so my understanding is that COVID is not part of that list anymore.
Uh, were we going to do like a blanket pandemic?
Yes.
Rather than COVID specific?
See, you know, I, I have a thought process in that, I mean, because you have, you have ADA, you have FIML, you have other things. If somebody has an illness or a certain type of thing, pandemic, I think that it, a natural disaster is called for. You know, I mean, like governed, like kind of almost a, like it only kicks in in the event, it's only an available category in the event of a declaration of pandemic or natural disaster or something like that. Because like I said, I hate it, the one thing about COVID now, somebody could get COVID, right? Well, then they, then there's a COVID leave category that they want as administrative leave that's different than what other people with regular FIML and, you know what I mean? I want it, I think it's now, it needs to be classified as any other type of regular illness. Because that's, I don't like the COVID. Because that's, I don't like the COVID much, but. I mean, like I said, it's up to you how you guys wanna do that, that I think that you could have. Natural disaster slash pandemic, perfect. Leave.
Well, I believe the motion carried. Uh so if I was here, I could pitch, explain it. Yeah, make bail and then we'll discuss. Without the state on leadership. Make that, make that one. Uh, don't make that. Uh Brandon, while you were gone, we found uh this genius over here. Again. Uh, we can't get real quick. Playing Brandon, on ACOs. Or Echo's website, they have uh employee handbook. Uh so it's a form you can download it to do that. And that's what they give to. We voted on earlier using bits. And having our DA scrub it. And we're gonna add two categories. Yeah, I can't read upside down. Social media. And what's the other one? In uh categories. To add to the handbook, but we're gonna use this, let her scrub it. And then come back and hopefully, it's kind of a goldmine that's been sitting out there for years. That we just another. She's gone over it, she's feeling very comfortable. And it's good to have the support of somebody like. So. We can reopen item number three. If we're following Robert's rule of order, would you like to rescind your motion?
Well, not necessarily. I'm pretty hungry. But I will if that's the will of the committee.
Br- uh Brandon, you have a hankering for discussing item three, which is a twenty-eight day.
We figured your input was most valuable.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is break by twelve, so I think we can. I think we have time.
All right.
So.
Well, I will um withdraw my motion. Resent.
Yeah, sorry, second. All in favor, say. All right, we're gonna go to item three now. Thank you, Brandon. Uh and by the way, Leanne, thank you for all your hard work on what you've done on the sample.
It was a joy.
Uh so item three, this is one. Just a quick reminder, this affects about half of our chair itself. We had J and J, so that's a, that's a bunch of employees. The twenty-eight day cycle, there there was a, years ago Doug asked me pretty long DA opinion to where. Basically said we could not have been.
You agree with that mistake?
Agree with that mistake. So with that opening, where do we go from here?
I mean, if there's a, if there's a legitimate possibility and legal ability for us to go back to. Holiday leave that's granted based on the hours that they're scheduled, hours that they work, I'd certainly most rather do that because. For example, with our, our, now I'm a lawyer, I'm also in jail, but our employees who are on twelve hours or ten and a half hour shift for the four day work weeks. If they're off, let's say on holiday, they have to put in leave for part of the day and then holiday for the other day, so they get eight hours holiday grant. Or earned, I guess it's not granted at the start, and then they get um. The rest of it is done by their own personal leave. Which is my understanding at the time, that it was, it was the DA's opinion, that uh do we have that? Then, you know. You know, that's been, we've tracked that now. Back then.
Found it. Did you not find it?
I don't know if anybody asked, but um. I I could, I mean, I think Cassie had found when those meetings were, but we could also reflect discussion, but. From what I remember, cause it's been five or six years at this point, was that we had to. We basically had, we were forced to adopt a eight hour. The eight hour rule for holiday for a maximum of ninety-six hours per year at the time, which of course now it's more than that, you've got thirteen holidays, but. So yeah, there's a legitimate way for us to do that, certainly before that, I'd much, I'd much rather us do that, cause it's kind of a pain in the rear for employees that want to put leave in. For four hours in the twelve hour shift or two and a half hours, but ten and a half hour shift is what we're now. I mean, that's kind of a, and but with that, I think what was happening is that. Um I think somehow it was affecting the auditor, probably auditor report. Um because when that leave goes in. It it was affecting, and I'd have to relook at the report. On some of the employees that actually worked the holidays because. It's not a problem when you just, when you just don't work the holiday. It becomes a problem when you work the holiday, because the reports that were getting spit out, the auditor was showing. That you had leave that was granted and leave that was stored at this, on, uh because. When you work the holiday, he goes into a bucket for later use, and it was thrown off audit. So we had some employees that showed that they got a hundred and seventy hours holiday leave, which is not true. Starting bucket and the ending bucket was correct, but on the reports that were being spit out, it showed that they had ten hours holiday leave granted.
Cause it was doubling it.
It was doubling it because it was taken used on the same day, it was gone again for some reason, appropriately on their reports. So is that the, I mean, is that the intent would be on how to have a holiday for twenty-eight day cycles, cause it references the audit, the audit report? That's independent of the going back to a scheduled day. Cause again, I think we found the the document last time we were in here. It used to say that. You were given holiday leave based on the amount of hours you're scheduled, how many hours you were scheduled for that day. Now it's just you get eight hours period regardless of what you work. So um I think there's probably two different issues here. I think there's one, could we have brought back the possibility of putting it back on what they were scheduled to work, and then also. I don't know how we fixed the twenty-eight day issue. I don't know how or why that's a problem. It's, I don't ever reckon that it being a problem in the past. Um and it certainly wasn't a problem when we used chronos. But, you know, since this, since this audit report is frankly so old. I don't remember what happened. I don't, I don't know, when did we switch to executive time? Not much, not much before this, right? Probably one twenty-one, did we switch that before that or was it further back than that?
It was part of COVID.
Oh, it was, okay.
I think it might have been twelve nineteen.
Okay. So I wonder, I wonder what happened in those. Wonder what happened in those years before that, like nineteen and twenty and twenty-one. I'm worried those came up correct, because I can't imagine that the work rules changed on the backside of units or.
Right, right.
So just listening to you talk, this is just, I may be, this may be crazy, but. Could that be an appropriate usage of administrative leave? If the official wanted to ensure that the employee was not um losing time or money?
To just go in and use admin leave to cover the gaps?
To cover the gaps.
I don't know. I'm, it might be crazy, just a thought.
Well, it might be an easy way to do that, you know, especially now that we're revising the dropdown. List from admin leave, we can just throw that on there.
I mean, it still would have to be a, an appropriate use, I mean, I think we don't need to skirt some legal issues and understand how we can. But that would give them a tool to be able to document that accurately.
And this might be crazy as well, but I thought of this briefly after our last meeting and it just kind of came back to me. If this issue with these, you know, more than eight hour shifts is just going to be this perpetual problem. Would it be possible to just keep everybody on an eight hour shift instead of having a ten hour shift or instead of having a?
No, there's.
That's just not even possible.
Well, I mean, it's, it's certainly possible, but it would substantially increase our budget request. I mean, if you're, if you're trying to cover twenty-four hours, twenty-four seven.
They're gonna need more staff.
Yeah, cause right now, when, when they work twelve hours, they work, they work such that you never overlap a a shift.
Yeah, you have two, two shifts and that's it.
Yeah, two shifts, you got day in the morning and then when those two people are off, the other ones come in. So, yeah, I mean, you.
If it was eight hours, it would be three shifts instead of two.
Right, right.
Right.
But then, but you also have to cover days off because you have overlaps, but you don't have on twelve hour shifts.
I just thought of that, I was like, you know, this is just gonna be this perpetual angst of what do we do about this?
The DA opinion said that to do with state is, right? I haven't pulled up to.
Oh, there might be, if you pull it up.
Is that it?
Yeah, so and I don't even know if that's the DA's opinion necessarily, but um so that was the uh.
A question?
That, I think that was the question that Doug had wrote, Doug had written to the DA's office.
Okay, and you, and you think that an opinion did come out from this?
Yes, well, I don't know if it's, there's no signature, there's no date received or anything, so I wasn't sure. So if you scroll down to the next section there. I don't know if that's, so there's the proposed question, I think.
My thought process is, doesn't DOC work twelve hour shifts?
Hmm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what to do, you know, but like, for example, the troop does. And but the difference there is I think there are collective bargaining and that's finding arbitration and that would be stuff that. That we don't really follow there, so somehow they were able to negotiate that in their contract.
State troopers?
Yeah.
So when you get like holiday earned, holiday used. And you have those options on executive time, because those are uploaded. Can you not go into each and pencil and modify that? To like, say, ten hours instead of the normal eight hours that's inputted? Can you go in and modify those?
Sure.
And then go into each one, holiday earned ten hours, holiday used ten hours or whatever. Would that be helpful? Is that something you can do?
Yeah, it's something we can physically do. I think the issue is that, I don't know if it's legal to do. I I I'm still confused on, on how to practice, so like, uh maybe, maybe kind of just comb through this right quick. So it, so it, so that's, that was the question, basically, we already know. When they work twelve hours, when they work ten hours, do they get the amount of time? And that's what, that right there is, that that line that's underlined right there, that's what the handbook said for years. It said based on a regularly scheduled day for the employee, okay? So I put, so to that, that's what we based it off of. So Kathy, can you scroll down a little bit more? Um and then so basically. So, so that's where the the state auditor's office wrote us up for doing that, and they wrote us up year after year after year.
Okay.
But I just told them to buzz off because the handbook committee, the handbook still showed based on a regularly scheduled working. So then I said, well, show me where it says that we can't do that.
Right.
They could never do that. So, so basically what they landed on, so they, so basically, and that's, that's the answer that I always got. Yes, they had, you know, the state auditor.
No more than eight hours.
Yeah, should be, should grant, may grant employees more than eight hours from. Right? Um and it says, so you didn't have to use uh working extra hours, let's say, use paid leave, oh, well, something like that, which, okay? But, but so he, but so here's what they, so this is what they judge it off of. This is why, this is what my argument was, because it says, they referenced that, they referenced that Title Nineteen, Section Thirty, Chapter Thirty-One, Section Thirteen-O-One. And it specifically says, the heading on that document is vacation and sick leave. It has nothing to do with holiday leave. But that, and now again, I'm not a legal mind, so that was my, that was my ask to the DA's office, why does this apply to holiday?
Right.
When the, the title of. Section Nineteen or Title, whatever that is, Title Nineteen, Section Thirteen-O-One, is vacation and sick leave benefits. That's literally the title of the statute. But they, but it does.
Shouldn't even be applicable.
Well, I don't, I don't know if it should have, again, that's, I.
I have not.
I have not intended to, but, I mean, so. But that's what it says, it says any leave plan adopted by County Sheriff's to benefit the employee in the excess of leave benefits available to regular state employees classified service. That's exactly what the statute says, that's, that's a word for word adoption into this policy. But, but again, at the top of it, it says. That it's for vacation and sick leave. It says nothing about holiday, nothing about, nothing about any of those. So that was my ask to the, to the DA at the time, and I don't know if this ever made it out, I don't know if this ever made it to the DA's opinion, I don't know if it was just. I don't know if it was just talked back and forth in here. I I don't remember that part.
I I would have been here back in twenty eighteen, but I don't know, like, I would have hoped, I would hope sitting here today that I would remember writing an opinion on this, but. This is not, I mean, I remember the discussions in here. I don't know if we answered that. And I'll, I'll go, I'll go check. I mean, I don't know if, if we don't. If nobody can recall actually getting a DA opinion, it would have, it would have been on DA letterhead, it would have been signed by.
Yeah.
And you track, you have to track.
I, yeah, well, and I, like I said, I, I can go back and I can look through our formal, our DA opinions for that. Um, I think this goes back to how. The county statutes, which were written back in the year of the fifties, like identified workday as. An eight hour day, you know, four days a week, and that's where they were identifying that. But um, you know, obviously this didn't come about, the DA didn't say, hey, you're doing it wrong.
Yeah.
Uh the auditor did. Inside of the statutes, and then we would just be going back in and reviewing what the state auditors.
Well, and so they, and so they, they attached a, this, this thing called, whatever that is called, the state of Oklahoma mayor was attached, but it said, it provided, download it further. It says if uh. Or yeah, 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 keep going down, go down, go down.
That's it?
Oh, um.
No.
There was a, there was something that they attached, I don't know if this was ever popped, I'll scroll just a little bit more if you will. A little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more. Okay, I guess see a little bit more.
Yeah, it was at the bottom of the previous page.
Yeah, right, right there, see where it said. Provides that employees will be granted eight hours of holiday.
Regardless of their.
Right, but again, I don't know that that follows statute. So just because that's what they do, I don't know that, I don't know if, you know, they can put out a document that requires a lot of pushing and poking. But if it doesn't, if it, if that's not what the statute requires, that's why I was just confused, and that was always my argument. I wasn't really pushing one way, I mean, obviously I pushed it, like it's most advantageous for our employees. But my thought was, is that the example of the, the answer that they gave didn't make sense statute would be, cause I'm just a layperson that doesn't understand. What the intent of the law was, because if you look at that, if you, if you pull that up. Under this, you know, the statutes, the, literally the title of it is, is vacation and sick leave policy.
So would it be a matter of um if, if we realize? If there wasn't an opinion previously in twenty eighteen or wherever, if, if there wasn't one at that point. Can we just ask for one now and go forward?
Sure we could, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
And then that can determine, cause it sounds like as far as executive time is concerned. Once we determine that, you know, we have the legal right to do so, that there's a couple of different ways we can execute it next, in executive time.
Yo, I still, I still wanna, went out there, I think we're talking about two separate issues here. The, the item to me indicates that they, the, the issue that the state auditor found with the holiday. That has nothing to do with how many hours of time our employees are working versus versus what's being granted. So this is, like the item, the way that I read it, to me, is an issue that, I mean, I, that's not the sheriff's office. Problem. I mean, it is, but it's not, yeah, it, to me, that, it was this, but whenever I pulled up, whenever, whenever John and Trevor came up. Said, I don't know what your complaint is with the sheriff's office, we don't control that. We, we don't put that information into units, it's on, it's on, you know, I think Matt, Matt's the one who loads that stuff into executive time, he loaded it in there. I don't know why units did or didn't do what it did on back. Control of that, I'm pretty sure that. So um, and so there was, okay, well, we'll take that off. About to pass the document, that wasn't us, we, we don't control the, the way that executive time works. So I think there are two different issues. But yeah, I would certainly love to get an official, a formal opinion, I mean, if that's something that we can do. Surely, it's, 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 I would, I would love to know what the actual, again, this is just, and maybe this does include everything else. You know, even though it's just labeled vacation.
Well, I see where, I mean, obviously it's, it's not clear and it doesn't seem to be all encompassing, like you mentioned.
Cause there's a lot of different types of leave that are granted outside of vacation and sick.
Right, exactly.
And not great to earn.
As far as that being a legal question. I have to read four pages and decide what that legal question is.
Yeah. You just want something more.
I would rather you say, can we pay?
Can we get twelve hours?
Is it legal for us to pay twelve? I would rather you do that and give me broad discretion of not unpack.
So let's simplify and let.
And be like, well, I'm, I'm, I, am I actually giving you an opinion whether or not I think that. And be like, well, am I, am I, am I actually giving you an opinion whether or not I think the state auditors read the statutes right? Like that legal question right there makes my head hurt. Like that may be why I didn't get answered.
It's too long.
DA's, it's too long.
It's, it's a, it's a, that's a lot to unpack. Uh, uh, because it says, this is, I know he's explaining the history and the background. Go down. What is it actually asking the DA?
Uh, I think the actual question is, scroll down a little bit more, I think. Well, maybe.
Holiday leave. I mean, we're, we're just, this is all history. I'm just looking for the, the actual, what you want the DA to.
Right there, that's what it's called. Vacation sick leave plan means that the actual subsequent text that's actually found referring to either leave plan means only the plan of all vacation sick leave. That, that, those were my comments.
Okay.
So, I didn't write that. Those were my comments.
Well, so when, yeah, the DA request is follows.
Maybe this is the question.
Does the county budget board possess the proper legal authority to approve an employee handbook? Written in a specific manner to allow the county departments to, so if the sheriff's past practice. Of granting employees a regular work day shift. Of holiday. So basically the question is, can we grant them ten, i- if their shift requires them to work ten hours in their, or, or twelve hours. Can we grant them ten hours holiday leave or?
Correct.
Or instead of eight. That's basically the question.
Or react to that.
Okay, I got it.
What is he, what is he writing? I'm curious.
The, the following, where, and, and he's basically telling me which, which Lloyd laws I shouldn't look at. Thanks. I'm like, I don't wanna look at that. Um, but yeah.
Well, I mean, that actually may be awful though.
Right, right.
Because it says must be up to, up to a hundred percent less than different standard to use in the phrase of the term nations.
Right.
See?
So that, but like I said, that's the federal, that's the federal guidelines. And, you know, federal guidelines are different than state guidelines. And so, but yeah, I get the gist of this, yeah. If, it, I can go look and see if an answer was written here, but you know, another quick fix, just FYI. You got an issue with this? Every, every January, the legislature contains.
Yeah.
Right. You, there's plenty of people that like the voice of blue that don't think it's fair that they have to do. If you explain that this is what's happened to them, they'll change the law and give you what you need, real quick. And that's the quickest fix.
Yeah, your boss has no obvious.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, that, that to me, said if we're from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-five and we haven't at least said, we, we can't get an answer. Go fix it in the legislature, go fix it in the cap.
So who would this, who would this need to come from? Would this need to come from the court or do you, should I submit it correctly?
It, a request from legal services can come from your elect, any elected official has the ability to request a. A request for legal services or it can come from this particular board for a particular question. And really, like I said, I, I get the, I get the gist of this. If you, I can take a look at that, all of that's fine. Um, I understand where the, I understand the problem.
You, do you want us to re-craft, not sure of where, like?
All you can say is, I want a DA opinion about whether or not a, a, a HR policy that allows us to pay. Twelve hours of holiday leave.
Yeah, I think question number one would probably be submitted.
Right, like that, like right there is fine. And then it says, must the budget board adopt a policy similar to the attached? You know, I'm not, I mean, obviously. I, I, I'm always gonna tell you, like, you, you, that's the, if you want to submit that as your policy and say, does this meet requirements, it's the same question, right? And then.
Yeah.
Is this legal?
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
I think it's fine. I mean, you can resist it with that. It's fine.
Now they show a little bit of history.
Right. I mean, I remember all the discussions that were happening on it. And.
It made me just get stuck for a second. I was just stupid to understand that vacation seems to apply to holiday.
Well. The thing is, is you know, quite frankly, I think what it is, uh, I don't know. And I'm trying to think if holiday, if, if holiday leave is even a thing. I mean, it may just be because there's only two categories of sick, I mean, I'm trying to think, are you, are you kind of remembering this too from the?
Holiday.
The labor, the labor, the labor laws don't require holiday leave or holiday pay. It's definitely a complete policy. And because it's not a required, it's not like sick leave that's required. It's not like annual leave. That's required by federal law. Holiday leave is.
Right.
Not a thing. And so. Then it does go down the state statutes. So we're, what I think we're gonna probably be identifying, is we're gonna probably be identifying a very generic statute that was probably passed. You know, eighty years ago. That says the county work day is eight hours, right? And that's what we, and yet we have county employees working twelve hour shifts.
I'll, uh. Without objection, I'll submit the question, submit it. Question about the handbook, Brandon, I'll write it by you. And make sure you're fine with it and then I'll send it. Okay. All right, we'll do that. Uh, moving along, I'm trying to wrap this up. Uh, item five was on there in case anybody wanted to talk about the old handbook. Does anybody want to talk about it?
Good. Thank you.
Glad. Citizen's participation. No sort of present, or comments?
Thank you. Commented.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Uh, motion to adjourn, please.
I'm moved.
Okay.
Hold on, Taylor.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.